Please rise and join me in the pleasant.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join in moral silence. Thank you very much. Silence your cell phones if you have them. First item is approval of the agenda. I'll move it.
Second?
Yes.
So I just wanted to state, I'm not going to vote yes on the agenda because my understanding is Supervisor Keith Raddig's agenda item and to separate the Board of Supervisors' pay is not on the agenda, though it was timely submitted. This is something that was brought forward, I understand, before on January 10th, when we were told there was plenty of time. We were urged to seek a legal opinion from the auditor. We did receive a legal opinion that I believe would be pertinent to the motion. In fact, stated that it could only take place after January 24th, so it wouldn't have even been valid that night. And so with a fifth member, understanding that this issue not being addressed tonight, the Board of Supervisors won't have the ability to vote on that. I just want to explain ahead of the agenda why I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also address it since it was brought up. When this was brought up, January 10th, myself and Mr. Bittenger asked for the motion to be postponed. Due to there being no comp board meeting, no fifth supervisor, and a pending legal question. Things that were never stated by those that brought it forward were, let's wait because the comp board hasn't met. There's a pending legal opinion, and there's no fifth supervisor. I'm operating under the same bylaws that the Board has approved since 2015. This is when Mr. Taylor and I, along with then Chairman Mark Munson, approved the bylaws. Motion was brought up before, and I have the ability to say no for the agenda, which I did. Because it was already discussed, and I certainly am not beyond putting things on the agenda I don't agree with. I did it once. But I don't see the need to do it again. Any other discussion? All's in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay.
No.
Is Mr. Raddig on the phone?
I'm gonna go get him.
Okay. Okay. Motion passes three to one. Taylor opposed. Items two through nine constitute consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item two is approval of the minutes of the February 7th meeting. Item three is approval of the claims. Item four from planning and zoning is approval to set March 7th at 4:42 PM, March 14th at 4:42 PM, and March 21st at 4:42 PM for three public hearings for the proposed zoning ordinance map amendment from agricultural preservation to the agricultural estate zoning district, parcel ending in 00003. Item five from the county auditor includes A, receive the appointment of Alan Weber as a trustee of Odo Township to fill the vacancy. B, approval of liquor license application for Foot Wedge Sloan, sorry, Foot Wedge Lounge in Sloan, Iowa. Item six from the county treasurer is to approve refund requests for overpayment of taxes for mobile home VIN ending in 9280 in the amount of $194. Item seven from Board Administration includes A, approval of resolution thanking and commending Jill S. Steves for her years of service with Woodbury County, Iowa. And B, approval of resolution approving petition for suspension of taxes through the redemption process for initials SR. Item eight from Board Administration includes A, approval of a notice of property sale resolution for parcel, also known as 118 West Third Street, setting that for Tuesday, February 28th at 3:35 PM. And B, approval of notice of property sale resolution for parcel, also known as 120 West Third Street, setting that for Tuesday, February 28th at 3:37 PM. Item nine from Human Resources includes A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. And B, authorization to initiate the hiring process. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. We have a 3:35 PM set time from Board Administration. Our public bidder includes A. First one is a public hearing and a sale of property parcel, also known as 5217 First Street. Public hearing is now open for those who wish to speak for or against the sale of this property, after which we may receive bids. So is there anyone to address the Board on whether or not this property should be sold?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing be closed.
Second motion by Taylor. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. We're now open for bids on the property. If anyone would like to approach, give their name and address and their opening bid.
It'd be Bill Brown, 5300, correction, Villrove. Might give minimum bid of $400.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Jerry Perera. Come to bid on 200 West Third Street, Delott.
I believe that's third on the agenda. Is that right, Mr. Chair?
Yes. I'm sorry, sir. That's not up for sale at this moment. It's coming.
I know. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we have to do these separately.
Okay.
Yeah. We have a bid for 400 from Bill Brown. Is there another? Going once, going twice. Move to sell the property for 400 to Mr. Bill Brown. Second by Bittenger. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Thank you. Item B is our 3:37 PM set time. This is a public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as 3431 Athlon Avenue. Again, the public hearing is now open if you wish to address the Board on whether this property should be sold or not. Hearing none. I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Second by Taylor. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. We're now open for bids on 3431 Athlon Avenue. Name and address and opening bid, please.
My name is John Mike Chase, and I live at 23 Bridgeview Road in Sioux City, and I would like to make a bid of $718.
Thank you. $718. Any other bids? Going once, going twice.
Should be an auctioneer.
Thank you.
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing be closed, or not the public hearing, that the property be sold to Mr. Chase for $718.
Motion by Taylor, second by Nelson. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Item C is our 3:39 PM set time. This is a public hearing and sale of property parcel, also known as 200 West Third Street. Public hearing is now open. This is to address if the property should be sold or not. We'll receive bids afterwards. So I'll move the public hearing be closed. Second by Nelson. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. We're now open for bids. If you'd like to approach and give your opening bid.
Name Jerry Perera, and they contacted me, I think it was. Gave a bid of 323 and $22, be 345 total for the filing and everything.
345?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Bid of 323?
Yes.
Any other bids?
Brad Lepper, 880 Brunner. Just go 500.
Okay. Now's the point where you, we get people to come up until we get to a million dollars.
Miguel Padilla, 217 Perry Street, $700.
I'll go a grand, thousand.
Are there any other bids?
1,200.
1,500.
1,800.
You guys can stay up here by the mics as long as we're gonna... 23? 100? Okay. 2500?
28.
2800? Hearing no other bids. Move the property behold, be sold for 2,800 to Mr. Miguel.
Padilla? Padilla.
Second by Nelson. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Next. Thank you, everyone. Heather back there will help you with your completion of the property sales. Item 11 is our 3:40 PM set time from Board Administration. Includes A, the public hearing on the proposal to amend the lease agreement with the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority. This has been previously communicated as far as the terms and updates agreed to by both entities by consensus. Right now, we're in a public hearing, so is there anyone to address the Board on, on this topic?
Hearing none, Mr. Chair. Move that the public hearing on this topic be closed.
Second emotion by Taylor. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Next is item B. This is approval of resolution approving and authorizing execution of the Second Amendment to the lease agreement with the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority, second in sequence amendment, not the Second Amendment in regards to the Law Enforcement Center Authority. Dennis?
This amendment here will change. We were originally paying quarterly, I mean semi-annually 200,000 additional rent. That will continue. That'll go into a new maintenance fund we're gonna set up. And then the other part of it was we were splitting the 80/20, all the revenue coming in on federal prisoners. That will now change. For our Woodbury County, we'll get all the revenue until our debt service levy of 4 million, approximately 4 million, varies a little bit every year, is paid. Then after that is an 80/20 split, and the 20% will go in a maintenance fund along with the 400,000 a year. Till it reaches 8 million, and once it reaches 8 million, we'll continue to put the additional rent in there, but the 20%, then it will revert back to the county. The only time that will be tapped again is if we fall below the 8 million for a project or repairs that have to be done. But hopefully that didn't happen for a while, and we get this build up rather rapidly. And with the 400,000 additional rent going in, that'll also help stabilize it too, once we're past 8 million, because it will continue to build. So they could do a project, and we wouldn't have to split the 80/20. So it's a good deal for the county and a good deal for authority and maintains integrity of keeping the building the same as it is, and also having a maintenance fund, which we do not have now in our present facility.
Mr. Taylor?
Dennis, who is the decider as far as disbursements from that fund? Is that the authority? Let's say that there's a major repair, not that we anticipate this hopefully in the first year or two, but let's say three or four years down the road, there's $800,000 repair. Who's...
That'd be the responsibility of the authority, because they still own the building and the land.
So they can disperse funds from that?
Yes.
Fund that's built up?
Yes. I'm sure they will inform the Board what they're doing, obviously.
Okay.
They'll keep you guys informed.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, once this is done, that maintenance fund will revert over in 20 years. I won't be here, but in 20 years, it'll revert over to counties pay there as a maintenance fund that we don't have now.
Any other comments? All move approval. Second by Nelson. Any other discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Item 12 from the County Library Board, Julie Hayman, includes A, for action, reading of proposed ordinance for county library system and public hearing.
I'm asking, do you guys have a copy of the ordinance in your packet, but there was a minor change that needed to be done on item number, section five, paragraph one? And it's just a minor change. The library board has already been established, but we had language in the original for the establishing of the ordinance.
So it just has that minor change in it as far as the terms being six years versus the stagger term if they were just starting to establish a board of trustees. So that's the only change from what you already had in your packet.
So I gave you quite an explanation of what happened. So do you have any questions, or do you want me to just explain it so it's on the record? Why we're asking for this? Okay. So we are, the county library system is applying for accreditation with the state. The advantage of it being accredited is it opens up more grant funding for us and gives us access to the, I'm going to say this wrong, I'm so sorry, Donna's not here, the shared access loaning that they do throughout the state for periodicals and materials and stuff. This is due February 28th. We are only allowed to apply once a year for this accreditation. They have been working on this for several months. There's a three-page-long checklist of things they have to do, and the last piece of the puzzle was they want us to supply the ordinance that established the county library system. We could not find an ordinance, and as we went through this more and more, Ms. Hensley actually thinks that we probably never had one. We probably, in 1949 or 50 when this happened, probably didn't even need one. So I was thinking maybe it was lost. We're thinking there probably never was one. So we've already had the county library system for 70 years. We've been operating fine. We've updated our bylaws and things. We just, really just need this legality in place to give it for accreditation. So, do you have any other questions?
All move approval.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Item B is approval to waive the second and third readings of proposed ordinance. No issues with this one?
No.
Okay. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Bittenger. Hearing no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. And item C is to approve the ordinance for the county public library system in Woodbury County and to provide for the appointment powers and duties of the library board of trustees. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes four zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. I wanted to take just a moment to really commend and thank Ms. Hensley, because she kind of dropped everything to take care of this for us. So I very much appreciate that and all the help we had in the county attorney's office. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Item 13 is reports on committee meetings.
I had a conservation board meeting Thursday last week, first one. Went great. They got a good crew over there. Not much to report back on their, you know, purchasing equipment for the year. They're still struggling with COVID and supply chain issues with, you know, to purchase the equipment that they want. So we're kind of moving some stuff around there. And then I apologize for being a little late to the meeting today. I had a follow-up meeting with the LEC Chair Ron Wick and Kenny Schmitz and a rep from Baker Group across the street, talking about the LEC, going over, they have some drone footage of the construction where it's at currently, and then some pictures of the inside, and then went over floor plans, questions, and all that kind of stuff. So it was, I've heard from folks in the county that have their doubts about this LEC, that we're gonna repeat the same mistakes of the last jail, and I can tell you that these, these guys work on this, are to make sure that we absolutely don't repeat the sins of the last one. And they've got a lot of great safeguards in place, this maintenance fund being one of them. And just the, the design of that thing, they've really got a lot of space for expansion, and they're not cutting any corners. So it's, it's gonna be a good thing.
No committee meetings for me, but last Wednesday I was in Des Moines visiting with our Northwest Iowa legislators, and Mr. DeWitt says hello, you guys. He wishes, he said, "It's a little more headache." Just a little bit more. Their base says hello, but no, no other report on them. I was good to visit last Wednesday, so.
Oh, they're creating a lot of headaches for us, too.
They are.
Over there, so.
Yes.
You know, it all comes around.
Mr. DeWitt to help us out, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Four of us attended the Woodbury County Farm Bureau annual meeting. I think that's the, one of the best-attended ones in several years as far as supervisors being able to all make it. So that was great. I think it was a good constructive meeting on secondary roads. Of course, questions on the progress of the budget process, Law Enforcement Center, and, you know, different ordinances and ideas of how to, how to help rural development and support the town. So it was good. Anyone have anything else on that, or any other committee assignments to add? Committee meetings to add? All right. Next item is citizen concerns. Hearing none. Item 15 is board concerns. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to address information for the public on compensation for county supervisors. It's important, I want the public to understand, as, and this isn't about whether it's on the agenda or not tonight. This is information publicly available. The motion on January 10th failed two to two, and we were urged to receive a legal opinion. Last year, you remember, there was a difference in opinion between the auditor and the Board that voted three to two to separate, and I'm quoting from the Journal, "The auditor continues to believe the move is not legal." So I did reach out to the county attorney's office, as had been urged again this year, although the county attorney's office in the past had advised through the assistant county attorney that the move was legal. And so with that being said, I did receive an opinion on February 9th, and it states, "A decrease in compensation paid to supervisors shall be adopted by the Board of Supervisors no less than 30 days before the county budget is certified under section 24.17." Iowa Code, section 24.17, requires the county certify its budget no later than March 31st of each year. And I just want to read the conclusion of the county attorney's opinion. "It is the opinion of the county attorney's office that the Board of Supervisors is the exception and can reduce the compensation from what is recommended by the county compensation board without any effect to the compensation schedule of the elected officials. However, this can only be done after the compensation board makes a recommendation for the compensation schedule." That was provided to each supervisor on Thursday, February 9th. Because there is no meeting next week, the Board of Supervisors will not be able to act upon this. Will essentially be timed out, and so any reduction to the supervisor's salary would have to be nested with the other elected officials. So these are all facts, and I just want the public to know for future years, it won't be able to be dealt with this year by the Board of Supervisors, because there's no time left, and the issue was addressed the one and only time earlier. But the public should know for each future year that the Board of Supervisors has the ability to reduce its own pay separate from the county compensation board recommendation, and, this is something I learned, it has to be after the compensation board meets. Those are all facts, just for the information of the public. Thank you.
To further educate the public on the process of how these numbers come to be, the Board of Supervisors has, in public meetings, I believe, the last few times unanimously appointed our representatives. I think it may be also confusing to some constituents to see if there are certain board members that tend to support between zero and a maximum of 3% to still appoint members that put out numbers like 22%, 10%, and even say at the last meeting that the number they should put out is, is almost 40%. I think the cause would be well-served, even if I may personally disagree with it, to put more scrutiny and to spend more effort finding representatives that more closely align with the ideology and the hard-line approach to compensation. This is, you know, that would strike at the root of the issue, so to speak. Because otherwise, this, you know, perennial action proposed will result in the same sort of disconnect with those numbers and what the Board ultimately generally approves. Any other board concerns? Hearing none. We'll move into item 16, the board review discussion for FY '24. Item A is the overall review and action of any budget items included in the FY '24 budget. Dennis, you want to give us, uh, some adjustments were made in this, in this tally?
Some adjustments were made. We did put a placeholder in there for negotiations. That's still to be determined yet. And also, we may have a new position being asked for. The city's waiting to prove it tomorrow at their meeting, according to John Malloy, for a GIS person. Our share would be around 52,000, but if they approve it, I assume we will probably go along with it, but the 52,000 will not come out of taxes. Here come out of reserves or gaming revenues. So it will not affect our taxes. So when we have our maximum hearing on the 7th, we need the supermajority vote that this additional employ will not affect taxes this coming year.
But it will in future years.
It potentially could, yes. Yes. The other thing is, the sheriff is working diligently on his ACH, medical services. I think he's planning on coming back with some more reductions, possibly. And if that happens, we just put it back in reserves. It will not affect the tax rate or tax asking, because it should be remembered that the legislature is passing bills down there now that they're using this current year as our base year. So reducing our tax base is just gonna be terrifically detrimental to Woodbury County. The fact is, we probably should be raising taxes a lot to protect ourselves for future years, but we've chose to stay at the same tax rate. In this case, we're gonna be one cent below the tax rate, and we'll just work it out. We're very fortunate that we have a new jail coming with possible, a lot of federal revenue that'll help offset what most counties don't have. So we're very lucky there, and we'll make it through it. Legislature's trying to play with us a little bit, but we'll make it.
Mr. Taylor?
Dennis, was that a position that came before our Board, the GIS?
I believe it was, but they're waiting to see what the city was gonna do. We did not include it.
Is, is that what we, I, my memory is faulty. Is that what we said we were going to do, is wait to see what they did, or we denied it?
I believe so.
Do you remember that?
Because we approved one out of two.
Yes. We approved that one software package. I forget what the name of it was. It was, I can tell you, I think.
I remember approving the one out of two software things, but I didn't remember.
I think this is the other one that...
MXDR we approved.
Yeah. This is the, another one. If they, if the council approved it, then we'd give it, give it another look, basically.
Yes.
But is that a position, or is that a program? Okay, so I'm...
Additional employee.
I thought the MXDR and all that was another program. Are we talking about a person or a program?
We're talking two different things. MDXR is a pro, software program. The GIS is an individual, shared by the city and county both.
And do you all remember talking about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we, yeah, we approved the MDXR.
Right.
We rejected another software they had in there.
It was a tentative. We said, go do the, go find out, meet with the city, bring back the information.
I guess, yeah, I didn't know that the second one was a person either.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about two programs. I'm sure we were talking about two programs, but.
Yeah, it's two programs. We approved one and denied the other one. This is additional person that Wick feels they have to have up there for GIS.
Okay, so when John's here, is that something that we'll take up and we'll have to assent to? Is that right?
Uh, yes. You'll have to prove it, but we can do that at the public hearing or anytime before the public hearing.
On March seventh or the twenty-eighth?
The only thing we can't change after our maximum hearing, we cannot raise taxes. We can drop it, we can't raise it.
On the seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth. Seventh, we're just proving the maximum, you can go up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And currently, we have revenues over expenditures of fifty-seven thousand, um, as far as a decrease from the current tax rate. So the number we're talking about is even less than, than that, if push came to shove.
Fifty-two thousand.
Dennis, is, did these numbers reflect the, um, compensation for elected officials? Is that already plugged in?
Yes.
Is that plugged in at the full rate or what rate is that?
It's, uh, the total amount. I always have to plug in, plug in the total amount, because if you prove it, it's there. If you cut it, the money we save will go back into reserves.
Okay.
Any money we save now will go back in reserves, so we do not want to reuse our tax asking anymore. We gotta. It'll hurt us in the following years tremendously.
And to reiterate, it also includes a, a placeholder for a collective bargaining group currently under consideration. Uh, there's, um, as far as the county's last offer, uh, those dollars are plugged in, so we're, we have a realistic expectation of where things currently are. The calendar has been an issue, not just the county side, but on the union side, so I hope next week there's a, there's a meeting, and I believe Mr. Bittenger can be available to. To represent the board there. Uh, is, I was told Mr. Ragg is calling in. Is he, does he, is he calling in?
There were issues.
There were issues.
Yeah, Andy was trying to correct it. He tried to call in, but he wasn't able to come across.
Can we call from our system or that's not?
I don't think so. He said that he was going to.
Okay.
Try to get it accomplished. And we also, he is working on, uh, March seventh, where the possibility of two supervisors calling in.
Okay. Yes.
So I just want to clarify too, for the good of the public, and I want to commend everybody up here and our other elected officials for doing what we've done. I think it's great, and I don't want to make the perfect the enemy of the good. I know we all have our own little issues that we want to see. But I am planning on voting for the budget. I want that to be known. Um, and so I'm gonna attempt to call in from Kosovo, and we're working on a solution as the auditor mentioned. With that being said, we need to have four affirmative votes.
Correct. There are five positions, and we checked to see if there's only four supervisors here. Still has to be four.
On March seventh, for the budget, it doesn't take.
That's for the maximum hearing, March seventh. That's when you're gonna try to call in.
Okay. Thank you.
For the regular bu. For the regular budget, it only needs three votes.
Okay. On the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
So for, yeah, just go for mark two, yeah, I'll be voting for the budget as well, but I'll be out of town as well, so. So that's the three of us calling in or just you and me? I think mark two. Is anybody gonna, are you?
I will be here. I will be here and Mr. Raddick will be here, uh, I've been told. Uh, and then three of you will be calling in. And I already asked Dennis if we could adjust that date, but with the publishing deadlines with the papers, uh, the ten, not more than ten, less than twenty, however that works, it's not really feasible. Uh, to coincide with our certification date. So.
Three, um, the date.
Three on the phone, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good luck, Andy.
Worst case, just call our cell phones, someone up here. And, uh.
Yeah, unfortunately, we'll be out of town for something I've had booked for six, seven months, like, you know, just, as was, but I plan on voting for the budget.
Well, I am too, so we have at least the expectation of what to expect from who's up here.
Someone can call me and I'll hold my cell phone.
Which is helpful, yes.
I have to do that.
Oh, boy.
And then, uh, just to clarify, uh, I do want to mention, because I've, I've heard mention of the county's use of reserves in this budget. The county has not really used reserves for this FY twenty-four budget. What we've used has been a, uh, set aside fund, uh, by the sale of the county farm a few years ago, which was put in a restricted reserve account at the time, dedicated to property tax relief in the next future couple of years if needed. And so we use that because it was planned and then because it was new dollars, not from property taxes. Also, we used some carryover money from FY twenty-three in the county attorney's budget due to the staffing, uh, openings and not spending out of that. Other than that, we've used gaming as we have every year, and we've used local option sales taxes we have every year. And, uh, perhaps local option to a greater extent, but I believe gaming to a lesser extent than we have in previous years, so I just want that to be very clear. And if I, and if I'm wrong, the budget director's right there to correct me.
Nope, that is true. The only thing that might come down to hurt us a little bit is the potential backfill over this mistake, this statement.
Right.
That's the only way. Otherwise, we protect ourselves for next year. You almost have to think two years ahead of time on this darn budget, because the legislation's gonna affect us. It's gonna affect every state and county. We're fortunate where we stand.
Right. Yes.
And, and I've been asked too, on, you know, the number one budget thing is to not use, uh, one-time money for ongoing expenses, right?
Correct.
But we're sort of building that bridge to CF Industries revenue, to stair stepping the federal prisoners in jail, and then economic growth too. So I think that there's ways that we're doing this that are responsible, um, that people have to understand as well.
And the one-time funds from the sale of the county farm were one in a hundred time, one hundred year?
Yeah, we don't have another farm to sell.
We don't have another century farm to, uh, to sell, so, just like we don't have another law enforcement center to build.
Right. And we did use half the farm proceeds, portions proceeds this current year, so we've actually used two years to help out.
Yes. As previously agreed by the board.
Yep.
So. With no other items really outstanding, we do have a, is it a one cent tax rate decrease on the countywide levy at this point?
Exactly one cent.
Well, good job, team. Uh, we started with the biggest shortfall in, well, because numbers always go up, maybe county history. And we made six million dollars of cuts in the first week, and we've closed with improvement requests probably over seven million dollars. So I think, I hope that gets at least a little bit of attention, um, because it is the total budget over a couple of little items. Anything else that we can think of, we want to do with the budget before it's published?
The only thing we're gonna publish is the date for the public hearing, which is the next item for the maximum levy.
Mm-hmm.
Then after that is done, we'll set a date the same day after the public hearing for the actual public hearing of the adopt, to adopt and certify the taxes and the comp board.
Yes.
And the comp board has to be done by resolution if we make increases. That's one thing you pointed out.
Say, say that again?
We increase wages on elected officials. There's a comp board. We have to do a resolution separate, along with our adopted budget resolution. This is something new that I never knew existed, but it does exist in the code.
Is that your concurrence, or do you believe that by virtue of just passing it, that that resolution's satisfied?
I think technically in the past, by virtue of it being set on the agenda, by virtue of the discussions between the board members, the public hearing, it is in essence the equivalent of what the code is requiring for resolution. It wouldn't hurt, um, to be safe and put it in a resolution form if that is what the board prefers to do, but I think what we've done in the past has been sufficient to meet that code requirement.
And I'd like to leave it that way.
Well, we've just been advised it is sufficient, so.
Yep, good.
Unless someone wants to write that, uh, we'll.
No.
abide by the advice we received. Any other items for item A, or is the budget in good order? Well, then there's no action on item A. Item B is approval to set the public hearing for the maximum property tax dollars for FY twenty-four regarding the general fund and rural fund to be held March seventh, twenty twenty-three at four forty-five PM. I'll move it.
Second.
Second by Taylor. For scheduling purposes, the next meeting is, uh, February twenty-eighth. I'll be available to review the budget, Karen. And, uh, that will be our last meeting that's set at three thirty, uh, and for the March seventh meeting and forward, we'll resume four thirty PM meetings, unless the board really enjoyed three thirty, and we can discuss that then. But we've, we've, we've scheduled out the public hearings and property sales for going back to four thirty. Hope it, hope it continues to work well for our citizens as best as we can accommodate them.
Thanks for all your work in managing all of our schedules too and guiding us through the budget.
Appreciate it. Thank, thank you to the three of you for calling in, making sure you have cell reception on March seventh. Boy, oh, boy.
At least we could do.
Alright, um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed say nay. Passes four zero. Anything else?